Check my sound.
You have, yeah, you have first pass. I say some of them from both points, you know.
I'm out that we think coming out of charter school. Okay, now I can bring the high school. I was really.
That's great. In fact.
Brilliant idea.
I've started doing it.
For this.
For like.
Yeah.
It's like, I had a conversation with you.
Yeah.
It's always when I get it finished, I'll send you a box.
Yeah, that's really beautiful idea.
Watch this housing authority meeting. Oh, give you a bullet points, but then I also I learned that you have to say. Time mark.
Oh, he told me so that part.
Oh, because sometimes it's just this and I want to jump to it. Yeah. Contacts.
Pass.
Yeah.
That's just good.
I never consider this like that. That's that's actually, I mean, I have.
So funny, we haven't ever crossed paths.
He's been this will be going to you. By it or, yeah.
That's weird.
But I've never.
They actually asked me to go on the board.
It's cool.
Ah.
Yeah, my wife, she's the chair.
This seems like there wasn't as many people as we're.
Oh, gosh, no, we are almost ran out of hot dogs this year.
Why?
Yeah.
Is, um, tell me, Mr. They. We're opening.
About a town list.
Yes. Yes, Kim was on the charter school.
The ball.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. That I don't call it. See it, I suppose. But I can do that.
Okay.
Definitely.
I can let her in if I need it. Yeah, I guess I need to pull the attention.
Yes.
Okay.
And in.
No.
While it's family.
Okay.
On time.
Through the bridge.
Yeah.
Well.
Most of it.
Get the railings.
Or did you get bricks?
Well, they are doing timber. I I was like, as long as there's a pass for it, you know, not going anywhere. He's been open for like the last four, the last couple of home games.
Oh, no.
Good one says like, it'd just be a nice way to kick it off.
Well, yeah.
Yes.
I didn't think it was okay for stories. All right. Okay. Let's.
I saw that, you know, that I'd gotten a briefing from Craig, so there must have been additional news.
Over and down.
What? I heard part two.
Twenty six. Have seen this company.
Correct.
For our block. Oh, but it'll be awful. We'll have temporary, I mean, temporary.
Yes. Yeah, Craig has an exciting update to share with you.
Spoiler.
I asked you if you wanted to share.
Probably. Hard feelings on that.
Exactly. Yeah, he's really still in your thunder.
Don't shake.
I think she has a schedule for two years. Because I mean, it could easily be. So I just. Yeah, so I just, Shannon is urging urging the two, because Vicki's been trying to figure it out. It can sure make, there's a lot of room for adjustment.
It'll trip one day or maybe something. Right, keep her.
And we'll have the ability to. Football team makes playoffs or cheers what we like. But the first scene I had not thought of at all. I mean, I don't know.
That's a secret.
I see first.
Good.
I don't know.
So she's like.
All right. Welcome, everybody, to the, uh. August fifth, twenty twenty five Sherwood City Council meeting. It's our regular meetings. It is just after seven P M. We'll go ahead and rise for the Pledge of Legions.
Like allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chair situated. All right. Thank you, everybody. All right, next is roll call. Colleen.
May your Rose.
Here.
Councillor Young.
Here.
Councillor Brous.
Here.
Councillor Stanky.
Here.
Councillor Scott.
Here.
Councillor Giles.
Here.
And Councillor Mays is absent.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, agenda is approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda. Second.
I have motion to second. All those in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say the same. Motion passes. Thank you, council. On the consent agenda tonight, we have two items. Item A is approval of the July fifteenth, twenty twenty five City Council minutes, meeting minutes, and item B is resolution twenty twenty five dash zero six one, appointing members of the Sherwood Youth Advisory Board. We have one of them here tonight, too. I have a motion.
And move consent.
Second.
I have motion second. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda and appointing our inaugural Sherwood Youth Advisory Board, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
There any chance?
Well, let me let me finish. Okay. Note, with no opposition, that motion passes. So thank you. We passed our consent agenda and, yeah, I know where you're going, Taylor, and and, uh, yeah, we have actually have one of our, uh, new newly appointed youth advisory board members here tonight. So thank you so much for for volunteering for that role. I think, uh, councillor Giles wanted to see if you wanted to say anything.
Well.
But you don't have to.
Yeah, you don't have to, but I was curious.
Okay, why don't you come up to the mic?
It's on, I think.
Yeah, red means on for that. So welcome to the even go ahead and introduce yourself and maybe tell us a little bit about why you volunteered to be on the Youth Advisor Board.
Hi, my name is Prachi and I'm fourteen years old, so I'll be a freshman in high school this fall. So as a member of the Youth Advisory Board, I really strive to, um. Have teens in our community, like have events for them and just like. Boost, um, teen engagement with these events, because I often like, there are often so many events for adults. But let's say, for example, at the library, and there are many events for children. But teens are right in the middle. They're in the middle of childhood and adulthood, and I often just notice that there are not a lot of events. And one of my goals is to make sure that there are enough events for teens, which aligns with their, which aligns with their values and just their passions and interests, and just kind of get teens engaged with these events. Yeah, thank you.
That's amazing.
It's amazing.
Awesome.
Thank you so much.
That's so true and very well said.
Yeah.
That was very well. I think you're 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 got a head start on the chair of the board, too, is the only one who showed up tonight. Thank you. Very well spoken.
She's an Energizer Bunny, too.
Oh, very cool. All right, so, um, we'll go ahead and move on to, I mean, kind of just it's kind of did citizen comments, but we'll go do citizen comments. Do we have anybody? Do you get any forms? Okay. And I don't see anybody online, so we will go right to our public hearing. So we have a public hearing tonight on ordinance twenty twenty five deserts are for amending the Sherwood zoning and community development code to add chapter sixteen point eight one annexation code and amend the. Chapter sixteen dot seven two procedures for processing the development permits. Do you want to read us in, Colleen?
Sure. The public hearing this evening will be conducted as follows. Staff will present the staff report, questions, if any, by the city council for staff. Receive any written testimony. We will then open the public hearing for testimony, and time will be limited to four minutes per person. Any interested person may present testimony. We will then close the public hearing. Final comments by staff, question of staff, if any, by council, and discussion by the council. This is the first hearing before the city council on this item. Generally, council will hold two hearings prior to making a decision. The second hearing on this item is currently scheduled for September second. However, in accordance with the city charter, council reserves the right to make a decision at the close of this hearing by unanimous vote of all sitting council members. If you wish to speak, please fill out one of the request to speak forms and submit it to the city recorder. Prior to the time of the public hearing is open for testimony. The mayor will recognize people who wish to speak, and any comments must be addressed through the mayor. When you come forward, please state your name, place of residence for the record, as this hearing will be recorded. Please speak clearly into the microphone. In reaching a decision on this item, council may be required to consider whether the matter meets relevant approval criteria and other applicable law. If applicable, those criteria are identified in the staff report. Testimony and evidence must address these criteria and other criteria you believe to apply to the decision.
Thank you, Colleen, and, uh, thank you, Eric. I'm going to, before we kick it off, we have Kerry Richter, our land use attorney, is with us on Zoom tonight. I just promoted Kerry so she can talk to you. Welcome, Kerry.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
We got you. Thank you, Mayor Resener, City Councilors, Eric Relich, Community Development Director with the city, joined by Sean Conrad, our planning manager, obviously, as mentioned, Kerry Richter online. I also just want to really thank Hugo, our associate planner, who really did the heavy lifting on on this annexation code and getting it to this point. So a team effort, a team effort to get here. Uh, I'm going to turn it straight over to Sean and I'll finish out the presentation towards the end.
Sarah, good evening, council members. So tonight you have, um, in front of you, a proposal by the city of Sherwood to amend the Sherwood zoning and community development code. To add annexation procedures and approval criteria. So this would be specifically adding chapter sixteen eighty one, a new chapter in the zoning code titled annexations. This is a type five legislative process, so it will require city council approval, uh, to be included into the zoning code. Uh, just briefly, some background information. Agencies were notified back in March of this year. Um, comments were received in April. Public notice was provided in April of a public hearing. We did have the public hearing, uh, just recently in July. One person was in attendance and provided comment, but that was it. We also received three public comments from the following agencies. Metro staff provided some comments to, uh, City of Sherwood staff. Thousands Friends of Oregon and Housing Land Advocates and Fair Housing Council of Oregon also provided comments. Those comments are addressed in your staff report, which is, uh, the recommendation from the bank commission. And just briefly for background, the proposed annexation standards in front of you tonight further the following council goal, which is to create annexation policies and a process to manage growth in the community. So. The, uh, the standards include, um, a process to evaluate the infrastructure, school capacity, and long-term community needs based on individual properties coming in, uh, in front of you for annexation. The annexation standards would apply to all those areas outside city limits, but within the urban growth boundary of Sherwood. So. Three major areas right now would be the Tonquin Employment Area, which is primarily primarily industrial lands. The Brookman Edition, primarily residential lands, uh, primarily residentially zone lands, and Sherwood West, which will be a mixture of industrial, um, residential and hospitality district. The standards in front of you include both the, um. The Oregon Revised Statutes, Chapter two, two, two standards, Metro Code, Chapter three point zero nine, which applies to local government boundary changes, and the City of Sherwood's comprehensive plan policies. Now, up till now, all of the annexation requests have followed those three criteria. The standards in front of you include those three criteria and add some additional criteria for your consideration tonight, which Eric will get into.
Thank you, Sean. Um, just to get into some of the details of the code and, you know, we we've done a few work sessions on this, so I won't, I won't get into too many details, uh, but happy to answer questions at the end if you have any or clarify anything. But first of all, the the purpose, um, three main things. As Sean mentioned, we don't have code that governs annexations right now. And so while we have comprehensive plan policy, uh, council and staff have identified a need to, um, really clarify the approval criteria, submittal requirements, but also the procedures, uh, at the local level that govern annexation. So, uh, that's the first purpose. Really, you know, this, uh, concept of annexation, uh, code came when we were doing planning for Sherwood West, but we also identified a need citywide as well, as Sean mentioned, um, and really was around infrastructure and making sure that, um, as we brought land into the city. The the, uh, public utilities, water, sewer, storm, transportation were provided, uh, at adequate levels and at the right time, appropriate time, given the proposed development. So I'd say that's really the core of what we're trying to get to here with this code. And then third is to ensure consistency, uh, with our own, uh, long-range planning documents, comprehensive plan, utility master plans, et cetera. There's, uh, approval criteria, for example, to conform to our utility master plans, and so just that extra layer, uh, to ensure awareness of the city's master plans and then reach compliance with those through development. So that's the the background and the purpose. Uh, in terms of the review procedures, uh, there's two types of annexations that we, uh, may receive, two types of applications for an annexation. First is quasi judicial. Second is legislative, and without getting into the details of all of those, I'll just say, um, we're based on the the size of the annexation, the scope of the annexation and any development, um, and a few other factors, we would determine if it's quasi judicial or legislative. Most of these are going to, most of the annexations we get are likely to be legislative annexations. Quasi judicial would be a type four, legislative would be type five, both of them would come to city council for a final approval. So in all cases, city council is the final decision maker on annexations. As we were getting through the process, uh, with Planning Commission, they did note that typically for type four and type five, there there is a recommendation from Planning Commission before it gets to to city council. We don't have that in the code right now. It's it's more typical for annexation procedures to go straight and applications to go straight to city council. So that's the the process we followed. But, uh, Planning Commission did want and the chair did want to make clear to you guys, if you guys felt that, um, there was a, uh, benefit to having them review the annexation proposals before they come to you, they're more than happy to do that. My opinion is, like, sure, I think that that could be beneficial. Um, I think there's pros and cons to it. It's going to take a little bit more time to get through the whole process, but you're going to have some extra eyes on it with people that are in the plan, with volunteers that are in the planning world, uh, here in Sherwood. So, um. I think staff recommendation is, if you feel like that would be, uh, productive and helpful before it gets to you guys, like, we can absolutely do that and be a quick, uh, change to the code, and we'll bring that back in September for an option. So a discussion, potential discussion item for you guys as to whether or not you want Planning Commission to review these prior. Let's see. Uh, so again, process everything in the end, even if it's planning commission recommendation, city council's decision maker and appeal will go to Luba. Um, in terms of the submittal requirements, I won't go into detail, just to say that we've added, uh, some clarifications to the submittal requirements. We do expect with the new code, the submittal to be more thorough than it has been in the past, mainly around infrastructure and ensuring adequate infrastructure. For example, a transportation study, typically we haven't required that at annexation. That's something that we would want, uh, as part of the new code to ensure, um, transportation facilities are provided with with the development, just as an example. Um, and then zoning, um, the, uh, the zone that that council adopts as part of the comprehensive plan is what would be applied at annexation. So some cities have a, it's called a two-step process or a two map, uh, system where at annexation, a developer proposes a zone. That wouldn't be the case, and they can do that, but it wouldn't be a typical approach. You guys are going to set the zoning as part of comprehensive planning. If the developer doesn't propose something else concurrent with their annexation, we'll just apply the zoning that the comp plan identifies. So it's a one map system. Upon annexation, it gets zoned whatever the comp plan says. The this code, however, does allow for concurrent, um, review of a zone change. So they could apply for annexation and a zone change at the same time if they wanted to, and you guys would decide on those. And then really getting to really the meat, I think, of of the of the code is the approval criteria and and annexation agreements. First on the approval criteria. So again, this is just another layer in addition to the existing comprehensive plan policies. Just to give a few examples of the approval criteria. Adequate public facilities in accordance with the master plans, uh, dedication of parks, trails, and open space to the city, uh, at the latest would be concurrent with development, but they would agree to that through with the annexation agreement. Subject to any constitutional taking law, uh, we can't violate the constitution with the annexation agreement, so we would take a look for for that. And then, you know, one that has gotten some attention from, um, and it's in the letter from the H B A, um, and I will speak to that shortly, uh, the annexation is in the city's best interest, and, um, we did tie that, uh, to the comprehensive plan. So the language in the code right now says the annexation is in the best interest of the city when evaluated against the city's comprehensive plan. So it's it's a little bit more detailed than some of the other codes. Uh, other cities will just have in the city's best interest. We took that as a step further to provide some additional clarity to the development community and property owners to say, you know, in the best interest when evaluated against the comp plan. So if you're in conformance with the comp plan. It should be deemed to be in the city's best interest, but that would be a decision for the council to make at that time.
So by adding that language, we're base, we're essentially saying, we're removing the ambiguity of the best interest, which I think was a concern of the H B A by saying, the best interest is defined by the comp plan. And so as long as you're. Correct. In alignment with that, then you're in alignment with the best interest.
Correct. And I and just to be as, just to be transparent, what I'll say about the comp plan, and I think everyone knows this, it it the comp plan is, um, you know, has has different, um. Different, uh, um, interests, I guess, or or different policies that may compete with each other at times, and so that would be up to the council. So there could still.
They're weighing those things. We would be weighing.
You guys would be weighing those things, but it's in under the, under the provisions of the comp plan and under the policy of the comp plan.
Yeah, but it but it's transparent in that if you're generally following the comp plan and you're weighing these things appropriately, you're you're going to be meeting that criteria. and you're weighing these things appropriately, you're you're going to be meeting that criteria if you, you know, so I think that should give any potential applicant some peace of mind that, okay, we're doing our homework and we're seeing the comp plan and we're seeing it's in there, then this is not an ambiguous criteria that the city council is gonna be able to come in and make it anything they want in the end, right? Like, we're putting, we're putting structure behind it that that is is, I would say, nonambiguous.
Yeah, and I and I, what I'd say is, you know, it it ties the decision to adopted policy.
Exactly.
Which is important. And so it's not just
You just put a really fine point on that for people listening. Under our current policy, it's just in the best interest of the city, which is completely subjective, and the council could decide whatever they want. So this is actually, this isn't like new rules, this is actually explaining and providing clarity for people that wanna bring land in the city.
Correct. And I think that's a kind of a big picture, you know, some of the testimony, some of the conversations we've had, I think that point is missed with some of the stakeholders that outside, you know, we, the city doesn't have to adopt this code, and we can still process annexations today without this code. But that, but those policies are just what's in the comp plan, and it's more discretionary, less certainty, less detail on submittal requirements, et cetera, et cetera, than the proposed code. And so while stakeholders may not think the code is perfect, what I would argue is it's a much better, you know, process than what we have now, which still allows discre, you know, what's on the books now allows discretion and allows these things that some of the concerns are raising. And so hopefully this actually moves the moves things closer to certainty and certainty predictability for for the property owners.
And just another question, so for land that's already in the city for like a a permit to build a house or something, we have to follow the state rules around clear and objective standards. That doesn't apply to annexation, correct?
Correct. Clear and objective standards do not apply to annexation code, and I'll speak to that.
But we're proactively choosing to create some clarity.
Exactly, with the code, correct. Yep, yep. Thank you for that clarification.
Question on the, so you mentioned the competing standards. Does that mean that like, hey, this developer or these people are applying for annexation that is gonna have a little more density or they're, you know, than we have in our plan, but they're donating a big park or something that, you know, and so we get to weigh that to say, hey, we're willing to have, you know, the increased zoning, but we, is that what you're talking about?
Not not exactly. What I meant was, you know, the comprehensive plan is comprehensive, right? It covers employment, it covers housing, it covers environmental, it covers really everything that the city might, you know, be in, be looking at and weighing when it comes to growth and development. And so you guys will have the ability to weigh all of those different policies to determine. So for example, a project may really check one box of the of the of a comprehensive plan policy, but be in contradiction with another one. Okay. And so you guys would have the ability to weigh, you know, what is the most important policy given this property, given this proposal, and, you know, weigh those potentially, those policies that may be in conflict with each other and determine which one outweighs the other.
Okay, perfect. All right, thank you.
But if I could just follow on to Taylor's question, but just like a PUD, if a developer came in and said, hey, we wanna do XYZ, maybe it's a higher density like we did over off Murdoch with that that's going in over there in exchange. We got a large park out of that. We can still do that. We can still do those creative solutions with the builder. We're not, we're not creating any kind of barriers for that.
I think it's important that we have to maintain the distinction between an annexation and and a PUD or a development plan, which is a separate part of the process.
Yeah, the annexation would come first.
Yeah.
What I would say is it would be a different process to get to the outcome that you're talking. We would get to the outcome potentially through the annexation application and agreement, which and we could also, if we forego that, could get it as part of the PUD as well. So this would just be an earlier opportunity. But for example, we could do it through the annexation agreement to say, hey, our parks master plan clearly identifies a park on this property. You know, again, subject to constitutional takings laws, you know, the annexation agreement would have them dedicate that park with some detail on, you know, potential improvements. They get to come in, they come into the city, and then we would process the the land use application. But the annexation agreement has already handled that, the dedication. So, you know, we don't have to do it through the annexation agreement. We could do it through through the land use. But I think this is just an earlier, an earlier process to ensure that we get conformance with Parks Master Plan, for example.
Yeah.
So it's another earlier opportunity.
But wouldn't they want to know at that point that they will dedicate some land to a park and know what they will get out of that?
Yeah, and that's a great point, and it gets to actually my next point, which is annexation agreements. And what I'll say about those is, you know, just to play out this example, we could have an annexation agreement that says, you deliver this park and dedicate it to the city, maybe they improve it as well, maybe not. By the way, you are very clearly eligible for park SDC credits as part of that. And so we would kind of front load that conversation as well and give them a guarantee that they may get SDC credits as part of the annexation agreement. So ideally, it provide, and then they they have that guarantee, that's in an agreement. So it's not a question as to whether they're gonna qualify for the credit, you know, later on, and it's a little more risky for them potentially, the city might just say no or have a different interpretation on code for what applies for a credit. And so it provides that certainty to the developer upfront as well.
We can actually create a lot of certainty upfront before they even, the land even comes in.
I think if if we get this code right, and it's a, if we get the code right, ideally, it's a it's a win-win for both for both sides.
Yeah, provide certainty for the for the whoever's bringing the property in and for the city.
Correct.
We've gone to this agreement, we've reached an agreement where you get some things, we get some things, and then every, it's all backed by by the by the by the agreement, yeah.
I'm stuck on something that I that I think I heard you say about weighing priorities. That seems very subjective to me. So are there standards that we'll be able to follow, or are we, is it, it sounds like a whim, almost?
Well, it's a legislative process.
Okay.
And so I think, you know, most legislative, all the legislative processes are gonna are going to be like that. This is, you know, legislative process, you guys creating policy basically, and the policy is, and Carrie jump in here if I'm getting off, but the policy, so to speak, is you guys annexing the land. And so it's it's it is up to you to weigh those things. It does not need to be clear and objective, it does not need to be based on, you know, any necessarily any criteria that, you know, is quasi judicial in nature, I guess, where it's very clear that we're weighing this against this. Again, it's legislative. You guys are deciding if the land should come into the city or not as legislators.
And under the current law, it's pretty much subjective.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, again, and it's not, again, councillor Brous, it's that's this, that's basically how it is right now. The metro, if we go to the metro code for annexations, right, there really are multiple layers. What the metro code says about annexations is the annexation conforms to the adopted comprehensive plan of the city. And so even at the metro regional level, they are saying that any proposal for annexation has to conform to the comprehensive plan. And again, the you look at the comp plan, it covers all these things, and they're naturally competing.
I mean, there does come a point with annexations where it isn't up to our discretion, because once somebody's annexed in and then a property that abuts it, they have that through that one bill from like two thousand fifteen, sixteen, seventeen.
Yeah, so even with SB fifteen seventy-three, which is the bill that if certain criteria are met, the city cannot send the annexation to the voters. Even with that, that state law also says that the annexation conforms to the, and it's even broader than the comp plan. It just says that the annexation conforms to the policies of the city, basically.
Okay.
And so you can't send it to the voters, but you guys can still decide if it conforms to the policies of the city and reject it potentially.
I've just never heard it explained this way, so thank you.
So the example that popped to my mind right when you said it was, hey, we we wanna have at some point this hospitality zone in our comprehensive plan, and we wanna have this different housing and industrial land. And it might just be a question of timing, right? Maybe we don't want the hospitality zone until we built some of the housing up. And if we were to build all housing or something, we might say, hey, we don't need another housing project annexation before we get some commercial, or you know what I mean? Like, is that the competing priorities where we say, yeah, we want all of this eventually, but we wanna balance it and do it in a
I don't know that I would argue that that would be a valid reason for denying, but
Okay, I just, that was, that's why I'm checking it with you. Is that the competing priorities where
Yeah, let me, let me clarify. So we have policies in the comp plan, for example, around housing that well, let's use a different example. Let's use the example of, no, let's use housing. So housing, for example, right? Of course, the state is in a housing crisis, Metro's in a housing crisis, Sherwood needs more housing as well. The comp plan policies are gonna say, you know, we should encourage housing, we should encourage affordable housing, of course, housing for all all community members. We're also gonna have a provision in the comp plan that talks about working with the school district to ensure that that they have the capacity to serve all of the students in the school district. And so if we have too much housing and the school district can't accommodate that, then potentially, you know, that the 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 policy that we have in the comp plan related to school capacity, then we have a concern there. And so then we could make a finding on that policy. You could use that example for, you know, there, again, the policies of the comp plan, there's a lot of them, and they cover a lot of different topics. And so at the time, you guys are gonna be weighing that proposal against all of the comprehensive plan policies and and weighing whether or not this land should be brought in, the benefits of bringing in the land versus the potential impacts of bringing in the land.
I I think another really good example would be you could have a situation where the state passes a law that you can build housing in industrial land. And it's really important to us that our jobs land is jobs land, so we could decide it as a council to have that annexation agreement to make sure that it's jobs land when it comes in. So there's, it also creates opportunity for us on those side to make sure that we're getting, we're, at least for me, making sure that we're delivering in the comprehensive plan and future development what we promised in the council.
Agreed.
Just finishing the comments on annexation agreements, so what I'll say is that they're they're common throughout the Portland Metro and the state. Many cities use them. We did include an example annexation agreement in the packet. It's from Grease Crossing, City of Hillsborough, probably a pretty good example of what the city might be going after with an annexation agreement. The annexation agreement would run with the land, so it's it goes with the land, not with the property owner. So if it sells, annexation agreement is still valid. And and then the agreement would outline the proposed development, the provision and timing of infrastructure. If we do need to get into a financial agreement with, you know, credits or anything like that, it would outline those terms as well. City council is the final decision maker on the annexation agreement as well. They're gonna be worked on by staff and then brought to council. And, you know, if for some reason we miss something, you guys would have the opportunity to amend those before final adoption. And then just moving along, so this is the review criteria for this proposed code amendment. I don't get into details, just to say the staff report addresses all of the applicable criteria for approval. As Sean mentioned, we did get public testimony, we got testimony from Metro. They only commented to ensure that the public noticing was adequately covered to them, that we covered, that gave them enough time. And then they did wanna work with us on fine tuning some of the language of the code, so we did that. Nothing of substance on the record, though, from Metro. We did get comments from Thousand Friends of Oregon, Housing Land Advocates, Fair Housing Council. They did express concern about the code's compliance with statewide planning goals. We've taken a really close look at that testimony. We've worked with our land use attorney, and we've responded to all of the concerns in the staff in the Planning Commission recommendation. Frankly, we really appreciate the engagement and and the feedback. I think it's really, it's frankly good to get some testimony, even if it's in opposition, to really see kind of a counter argument. So we appreciate the testimony. We don't think that there is any issues with the proposed code as it relates to state law and all those findings are in the staff report. And then the last piece of testimony, almost wrapped up here. We did get testimony a few hours ago from the Home Builders Association of Greater Portland. Again, I really appreciate their testimony and weighing in. We will, just because it was written testimony, what we'll do is slightly revise the staff report and the PC recommendation to address these comments for the next packet and for adoption. But just really quickly, the the three main comments that were raised in that letter, which you guys have, clear and objective standards, which we clarified earlier. Clear and objective standards do not apply to annexation code or annexation approvals. And so while we we absolutely respect and and implement that law, when it's needs to be applied, it does not need to be applied in this case. The other concern was timing of site-specific studies and proportionality, including the impact studies. The impact studies being required to study the maximum allowed land use intensity. And what that is, is they're gonna give us studies to show that the site can be served by infrastructure. And what the code says is you you gotta deliver the study at the most intense land use possible on that site, based on the zoning. Understood that if it was left there, that could be a concern, because then they could be over-delivering on the infrastructure. What we did is there's a subsection right under this section that says the applicant can also study what is required just for their project, and then we can deliver and require the infrastructure at that level. So it's not a all or nothing, you know, full infrastructure. We also provide an out, frankly, to deliver it at the at the level required for their development.
And kind of my read into why we did that is if you go back to like HB two thousand one, and some of these rules that came out of Salem, developers have a lot of power to choose what type of housing. So if you plan a neighborhood for single-family detached, and you size your sewer system for that, and they come in and build four quads, that's a problem. So we have to understand what that maximum intensity looks like.
It's a great point. There is a lot of variability in in how much density a site can get under the state law and under the state laws now. And so we need to be able to plan for that. However, if they truly are doing something less, then we could also agree to deliver something at that lesser intensity.
Annexation.
And then the last comment was around annexation timelines and basically expressing some concern that these these applications may never, I guess, get to you, or you may never take action on them. What I'll say is, you know, Sherwood has indicated, you know, willingness to to grow in the in the right places at the right time. We just did the UGB expansion, of course, to plan for our growth. The the legal response is that because these are mainly legislative, you guys don't actually have to act on them, but that would be your discretion. Even quasi judicial, it's not considered a a permit or a zone change or another type of action that requires, you know, inaction.
There's no clock.
Correct. There's no clock. And so while absolutely like, especially if it's a good proposal, like, it will get to you guys and there will be a decision. However, respectfully, legally, you don't have, you don't have to, and that's just the law. I don't think we're gonna advocate to change that law, so.
And there could be a future council that decides to just not do anything, but but that's not how we've been acting for as long as I can remember. We we act on this stuff.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I wouldn't think that's good government. People deserve a yes or no answer.
And I will, I know where that question comes from, because you do have jurisdictions out there.
Yeah.
That just sit on stuff.
Play those games. Yeah, I do have a question around this section. It kind of applies to what you led with it earlier, and I wrote it down, and then it came up here. And the concern about annexation timelines, if the if the applicant slash developer was so choosing, they don't have to do this, but if they chose, would they be able to process a application for a annexation and then kind of start the planning process with the city at the same time? So that they could, they could voluntarily kind of reduce their clock if they wanted to work it that way. Now, obviously, they're introducing some risk if the annexation got denied, but is that even an option for them? Or they really have to wait until there's annexation before they could start the planning process?
Good question.
Or at least pre-planning process?
Yeah, so certainly on pre-planning, like, so pre-application conferences are typical pre-plan, like, absolutely. We'll we'll hold those pre-pre-app conferences, you know, while annexation's pending, that's not a problem. I think, I don't wanna say for sure that we could do a concurrent review, like a formal concurrent review of a land use application with annexation. If Carrie's got a got a quick response, I'll take it. Otherwise, we can get back to you on that one.
It could shorten the process, though, wouldn't be concurrent. But in addition, if I understand it right, if, you know, part of it is transportation piece, so when we get to post-annexation and actually into the months of plan review and permitting, they could just build They could just build on that transportation study, or if it meets the criteria, just use it.
Correct.
That's great. We're not asking them to double up on work.
Correct, correct. Carrie, any input on the concurrent review?
So if an applicant had a annexation application along with a subdivision. The city could process them together. But and and that but the subdivision couldn't be approved until the annexation was approved. And.
Sure.
Go ahead.
No, no, I thought you were done. I apologize.
So so what would happen is the city might approve the subdivision. With a condition that says the annexation has to be approved. I would think that no applicant would go through the trouble of having an engineer design a subdivision without. You know, having an annexation first.
Okay, thank you. But to your earlier point, like absolutely, we can work with developers. Frankly, we've already been meeting with developers interested in Sherwood West. I mean, that's how early and willing we are to to meet with people and talk through plans and proposals. So.
Yeah.
And then just to wrap things up, planning commission recommendation is for approval. They did make minor revisions to the code for clarification. And you have that full recommendation in your packet, your alternatives for this evening. We recommend holding the first hearing, taking any public testimony, obviously, holding the second hearing as well, which will be on September second. Getting through that hearing, taking any testimony, and then your options are approved based on the planning commission recommendation, approved with amended code language or findings. You can deny the application, or as we discussed, not take any action on the proposed legislation. Happy to take any further questions.
I have some comments, but I'll reserve them for discussion time.
Same here.
Any other questions?
I had one.
Yeah.
You mentioned the planning commission review as a possibility. Sorry, staff time and planning commission bandwidth for that? Is that even feasible?
Yeah, I think it is. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we're, you know, at this point, planning department, planning commission, that's there. They go together. And so it wouldn't be that big of a lift for us to take this through initially.
Okay, because it would be nice. They do know more than we do as far as planning stuff or a different perspective of it. And so that'd be great.
If I could just comment on that, too, I think if the staff, we can handle a staff times wise. Because of some of the criteria we're laying out here in terms of some of the studies that need to be due. We have some wonderful people in planning commission. They have a lot of knowledge. I would like to have their own.
I was gonna save that till after as well, but I was gonna say I would prefer this go through planning as well. And I mean, you're preparing it for city council anyways, so. Just a little bit sooner for them before it gets to us, but. They always are very thorough and, you know. Not that we're not as well, but they see things that we don't see sometimes, so.
Awesome. Any other questions?
Just add, is there any way to accelerate it, right? Their their big concern was we don't want it. To be slowed down by going through them, but I'm in agreement that. I'd love another set of eyes, especially some of those eyes that are on the council or on the commission currently. Is there a way to? Make it so that it's, you know. Faster, like so that the the people that are applying are not saying, shoot, it's another six months, right? I mean, is that?
Yeah, it certainly wouldn't be six months. You know, I could see this adding about a month to an approval.
Okay.
What I'll say is, you know, especially for legislative, if, you know, bringing land into the city on a on a permanent, you know, basis is a big deal. And it seems like the month for that additional review by, you know, local representatives, probably a good good thing.
If it's just a month, it's a no brainer. Yeah.
I I'd say that's about what you're looking at. It's about a month to six weeks of additional time.
Yeah, that's a no brainer.
Great, thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. So I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing at this point. Do we have anybody?
Clean.
And we have no one online, so I will close the public hearing at this point. So now we're to council discussion. We don't have everyone here tonight, so we can't approve it tonight, even if we wanted to. But do we have any additional discussion? I think you said we had.
Yeah, but looking at the. The list of concerns submitted by the Home Builders Association and I appreciate. Them for their input. We think we talked pretty extensively about number one and number two on their list. I did want to just talk a little bit about number two with. Requires impact analysis, including transportation studies based on assuming the maximum intensity land use is authorized by the zoning district. We talked a little bit about that. A bit ago, but I just wanted to kind of dive dive a little deeper here. The reason we have to do this is because the governor and the. The state legislature have over the last three or four sessions in in Salem. Greatly reduced, in some cases eliminated, or or on the precipice of eliminating. Much of the local control that we have to determine. What goes where when we when we add land to the city and what what? What's the density that's going to get built? What's how many units are going to get built per acre? How many what type of housing is going to build? All of that control is is rapidly being taken away from us and from the residents of the city. And the residents of the city are are losing pretty quickly their ability to. To weigh in on this and have any impact over this through their elected officials or or through the public process and 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 even so far as. Salem is strongly signaling that their next intent is to actually remove. Citizens from. Any kind of planning process or any, you know, giving any input into the planning process. There won't be public hearings allowed if if Salem gets what they're. Probably going to do next. Citizens won't have the ability to even give input, let alone. Hear about these things. It'll just happen behind the scenes without the public process happening. It's it's already happening. So that is why we have to assume it would be it would be a dereliction of our duties not to assume. The largest possible impact on public infrastructure and plan and and to require them to to do studies on that effect. As Eric mentioned. If they choose. They can do an impact assessment for what they actually plan to build if it's less than the maximum. And then they get held held accountable to that. Okay, you you you're not going to do the maximum. You're saying in your impact analysis and your in your annexation application that you're going to do. Half is not the right term, but half of the maximum. Then, great, you don't have to pay for the full study, but you also can't then come back later and and change it after the fact, right? So. I think this is more than fair. And again, it's not a policy that is driven by any intent or desire on the part of the city. It's driven by the elected representatives of Salem who are removing rapidly be in front of all of our eyes, all local control in in the planning process and. And how citizens and residents see their cities develop going forward in the future. Thank you.
Well said. Any other comments? Taylor?
So I've actually spent the last couple of weeks meeting with different builders and groups and things like that. One of the things that. I just want to avoid in all of this is to. And I understand. The. The desire to make sure that we are protected for the worst case scenario, but I want to also. Be careful that we don't assume the worst case scenario is going to happen. And so I, while I agree with you that we do want to. You know, make sure the pipes are big enough, right? It's too big to expand those. After they're in the ground, you got to replace them. So. So I agree that, you know, we're kind of being forced into this, but I also have talked to a lot of builders that are like, we want to be partners. In figuring out what's going to go there because we know that that's going to sell. The best, right? I mean, the the. It's just me. My mic again.
I actually agree.
Finish your. No, the, okay, all right. Anyway.
I have a secret button I can.
Yeah, oh, so so I because I I keep hearing, you know, I. It is, it is, there's a there is a lot of fear. And so I I would rather. You know, rather than, you know, put up walls about, hey, we're not going to allow. You know, this or that to be, how can we partner with them? And it's it's a subtle attitude change, but I just want to. You know, we want affordable housing in Sherwood, right? And so but we just. We just want it done right, right? We want it to look. You know, the right way. And I saw some developments that were in Bend and some in Redmond and that are just. Like I'd move in tomorrow. They they looked great and they were under three hundred thousand dollars and they were and I was just like, wow. These are the kinds of things that I. I would love to see in Sherwood West.
Just to clarify, it is not the adopted position or policy position of the city of Sherwood that we want affordable housing. We have not had that. We've not adopted that policy.
I'll clarify. I want to have affordable housing in Sherwood.
Thank you.
Okay.
So if I could just weigh in a little bit on that, I think. When we're talking, like when you write a contract with someone, contracts always have to assume the worst case scenario. And I think that's what our conversations have been about. In whether it's public infrastructure or what's going to happen. I view these annexation agreements as a tool to do exactly what you're talking about. Sit down with us. And we're gonna we're we'll work with you and we'll get to an agreement and then we all sign on the dotted line that we agree to that. And then we hold ourselves accountable to that. So contracts, annexation agreements. There's this uncomfortable part, even in the private sector, when you're writing like an employment contract, there's this uncomfortable part where you feel like, well, I'd never do that, but we have to contemplate. Those worst case scenarios just to hold each other accountable. But that doesn't mean. I what I love about this is it creates a framework. They have those conversations with the builders. Sit down and decide, yeah, we all agree on this. This is what we're going to do. We all sign on the dotted line and we go make it happen. And I think. Sherwood has a great track record of working with developers and working with commercial clients and bringing in a lot of great. Great new projects into the city. I don't think that'll change. I think some of the fear and certainty and doubt that. Builders have is not because of us, but it's because of what they experience in other cities. You know, and. But, you know, to be fair, you know, we there's good actors and bad actors in every category of life and. You know, but that's that's how I look at this. This is an opportunity to get us to the table, get to an agreement, do some green projects.
And oh, sorry. Uh, yeah, just I would just say. As we discussed earlier. This gives a framework for that to happen. You don't the the applicant isn't required to do the study at the magnitude to assume the worst. If they want to come in and say, we're not going to do the word. I don't even call it the worst, the highest density. We're we're not going to do that. We're going to do something else, then they can do a study at that lower level for the agreement. Also, I'm really excited about. I think this actually gives us an opportunity to do that partnership and collaboration. Earlier in the process, so that it's not a combative, you know, experience in the planning process. This can actually be. Because it's not a quasi judicial process, like like going through the a planning application, the planning board is, it's the legislative process. Like a lot of work can happen upfront between staff. And the applicants and ultimately, you know, through this, through through planning commission and this body and the the approval process where we can actually have that give and take and that collaboration, because I want that, too. I don't want to be combative with our developers. I want to work together with them. And so I think this actually is a tool that will allow us to do that better. Because the 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 formal planning process. Doesn't really allow for a lot of that. It's a very rigid judicial quasi judicial format that doesn't really allow for as much of that. So I think that that gives me some excitement about this. And I just wanted to clarify my comment earlier. I am fully in support of having a range of of housing or housing available at a wide range of of price points in Sherwood. I just want to be clear on what we have and haven't adopted formally as, you know, as a policy. And I think the term affordable housing. Has a lot of different meanings to a lot of different people. And so I don't like using that term personally. Because it has a lot of different definitions that some people may agree with, some people may not, but it also may depend on which definition of that term you're looking at. So. I just want to say I do support a range of housing, but we do also need to have a policy to conversation about. What if we have an official policy on that front, we probably need to get that conversation at some point.
What does it look like? Where's the best place for it? All that kind of stuff.
All right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think these annexation agreements. I agree with Doug, give us a lot more flexibility, but they're going to be tied. You know, to getting what's in our comprehensive plan, which we'll have to do that process first for Sherwood West. And then it allows us to hopefully get the outcome that we want over there from our concept. And hopefully, our comprehensive plan is. Aligned with our concept plan for the most part, and then. Developers know what we are wanting out there, and hopefully that's what we'll be working with them on to achieve that. Those goals, so.
Renee? So I'm in agreement with what mostly has been set up here. I wanted to add a little bit more color to what to rephrase what I heard Taylor say, because I too have had conversations with developers. Our tendency sometimes because we. See worst case scenario or we're thinking about the what ifs is. The vernacular that we use when we're on the dais or in a work session is sometimes. Pointing the developers is negative. And I think that is not conducive to partnership. So I would caution us as we're having the worst case scenario conversations that we are just mindful of the. Verbage that we're using.
Good call out. I think I've been guilty of that at times. I would just want to say that my area, my ire is completely on Salem. I don't really have any reason to have any bad feelings toward any particular developers. I'm just frustrated with Salem that they're taking away all of our ability and all of our residents' ability. To have any part of this process and make any decisions and decide what they want Sherwood to be or not to be going forward. So. Any frustration that that appears like I'm I'm directing negativity towards developers, it's not my intent. It's it's really about Salem and and. That's frustrating to me, and I apologize to anyone if they've taken that the wrong way.
But Salem has given the developers a lot more tools to. Come in and.
The balance of.
Upset our apple cart with what we what our citizens want. For our community based on the five plus years we've been working on that concept plan.
Yeah, I would agree with that. I would go back. You know, there's good actors and bad actors. You know, we had a. Developer that wanted to put a ninety unit apartment building in with no parking. You know, and came up with very creative, legal. Rationals for why that made sense, of course, about that. So that but there's also some great developers out there. I just I I go back to, I agree with Doug. I heard it over and over in Salem as we were advocating, you know, that you just need to trust the developers. And I would say all the time, there are some great developers, but there's also. Some that aren't so great and don't care about what our community looks like in twenty years.
Yeah.
Some of the local companies are great. Some of the big national private equity backed companies, not so much.
Yeah, and and frankly, I I'm really with Renee on this. It's the. It's the tone and how we talk. And I love what Doug said about, you know, wanting to be a partner, right? And and using this as a tool. Because the ones that I've talked to have said. You know, we want to build. You know, what's going to make sure it's beautiful for the next, you know, X amount of years, right? And and what they want and all of the other stuff. It was not about. And so. So that's the thing is that I would love to point to Salem and say, hey, look what happened. You know, look at this awesome. Thing that we did because a city and a builder got together and got. They both got what they wanted out of this and. You know, so take a step back and trust us to do. What's right for our area and our city, right? You know, and I I would love to be able to point to that and as a as a win because. We did work with the people who are the experts in terms of, you know, building things. I don't I don't really know how to do that at scale. And so. So anyway, that's that's my goal is just to make sure that that they they hear loud and clear that that conversation is open and. That we are, especially the Home Builders Association, you know, thank you for this, but and I and and I love it, Doug, that I totally agree that. We, you know, so there's certain stuff that we have to assume the worst case unless. You're going to come in and say, well, I'm I'm committing to build lesser density, and so we can do smaller pipes. So.
I think I think, you know, I've talked to Salem on these bills that we're referring to is. We all want certainty. Right? And with certainty means accountability for both sides. And I think that's what we're trying to achieve. With this with this annexation code, I think we had. A few. Very specific things that happened in Portland and happens in other jurisdiction. So Salem writes a lot and cover the whole state. You know, so so we're the pendulum swung too far, in my opinion. So I think. I agree with Doug. A lot of my frustrations with Salem over this. You know, but it's hard to have a conversation about why these bills are bad without talking about. The potential abuse that can happen in bills. But I agree with you on the tone, a hundred percent. Any other comments? All right, well, we can't take action tonight, so we'll go ahead and. When are we meeting again on this? This will be first meeting in September. September second, so we'll. We'll bring this back up on September second. And we will move right into the city manager report. Greg. Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
Do we need?
Sorry, Eric, did you have a question?
Oh, it's on. Just in terms of the hearing procedures, do we need to get through? I don't know if you have a script up there. We can probably get you one. Get through, accept public testimony as well for this hearing.
We did.
We already did.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, we did. Was it before?
Yeah, yeah, we were in our discussion phase, but thank you. Appreciate it. All right, Craig.
Uh, evening mayor and council. I just have a couple of things, uh, tonight, National Night Out. Was uh attended well tonight. I think uh, the chief just told me we had three hundred and twenty hot dogs. As well as the dunk tank uh was very successful, as well as.
Three hundred and twenty.
No, he participated nineteen, so uh, as well as the band was uh played a variety of music over there. I think it was a good night. For uh, strengthen the relationship between the community and our police department. So, you got anything to add on that, chief? Okay, thank you. Thanks for giving me the numbers. Thanks for giving me.
Was the chief in the dunk tank?
No, cause I didn't come here.
You know, next year we can get a sub, make sure in the tank next year.
You can have one of your captains come over next year so you can stay over there.
Sell that at the auction, dunk the chief.
A couple of thing, a couple of things, uh, Movies in the Park start this Friday night, uh, eight fifteen to eight forty-five, somewhere in that range. At Stowson Park. I do wanna let you know, we did apply for a half a million dollar grant with the Oregon Watershed Enhancement Board. Applications were due yesterday and we submitted and it's for the Camry Restoration Project since uh that project is. Total project cost is over seven million. We got the five million grant. This is a half a million for the restoration part of it. So it's just again, looking for money where we can go after it. As far as the, there's no council meeting on the nineteenth, so the next meeting will be September second. I just want to take a little bit to talk about the, what's that? Oh, September second. Uh, I just wanna talk about uh the bridge. So we're looking to open the bridge on the twenty-sixth of August. It's not gonna be completely perfect. There's still gonna be punch list items. A lot's gotta happen. We've had problems with our uh. Rail, handrail, illuminated handrail. If it's, we'll make a decision, uh, it's supposed to all be here on the twentieth. And we have it pegged by the hours for the construction crews to actually get it up. To be able to open on the twenty-sixth, because we also have to have ODOT in Washington County sign off on the bridge on Friday, the twenty-second. So. There's a lot riding on that date, but that's what we're pushing for. I do wanna let you know that the project is coming in under budget as well as on time. Uh, which is uh, it's pretty remarkable, right? So even if uh. You know, we're hoping to have all the rails here by the first of October and the rails, we're hoping to have all the rails up except that the entrances on both sides. There have, there has to be some additional work with that. So again, I'll keep you posted, but August twentieth, we'll know for certain that if they're on site, that's like the.
Build the railings, that just not the finished railings.
It will be temporary rails put up, yeah, but the actual finished part. If if anything gets delayed, we'll know by the twentieth of this month. So uh, I'll keep you posted. We have to have it by that time to be. Everything, the last phase is installed. And so um, I also wanna let you know, next. Wednesday, they'll be doing a lighting, the initial lighting out there, if you wanna go out there between eight and two in the morning. Somewhere between that, uh, that could get moved. So if you're interested, re- reach out and let me know, could get moved around, but that's. Where we're at right now. So there's a lot of stuff coming down the stretch to be able to have it open on the twenty-sixth. And then Kristen and and Sarah are working on the grand ribbon cutting for the twenty-seventh of September. So that's where we're at on the project. So more to come in the next couple of weeks, um, but I do know that uh. Everybody, there's a lot of concrete that's still gotta go down. There's a lot of work. You'll have some temporary lighting also, so all. Just because we have to have lighting that won't be in the temporary handrail, but once it's open, it'll be opened and. The contractor will still be working out there uh, closing off small parts of the project, but. It'll be open for the public once we open it. We don't wanna open it and then close it again, so. So.
Phenomenal job. Please extend my thanks. And I'm assuming council's thanks to staff, the engineering teams, our contractors. Cause I mean, how often do you hear that under on on time and under budget for a government project?
I mean, we talked about some.
Sherwood.
Teams done a great job, talked about substantial completion in September. We pushed for the August, the week the la- before school started. Just a lot of stuff's gotta come together, but I feel pretty confident if for some reason we can't open it that week, it'll be open first part of September. So more to come on that.
Great job.
And uh, I think that is it.
That's a lot.
There's a lot of stuff going on, so it's good.
Awesome. All right, uh, council comments. Dan, you wanna start tonight?
Sure, uh, just wanted to say thank you to staff and volunteers for putting on music on the green this year. I attended a few of those. And they seemed well attended and everybody spent every time. It was very fun. We could hear it from our backyard as well, some of the nights uh when it was. Still, so it was fun. Um, the Traffic Safety Board uh had its first official meeting. It was converted recently from a Traffic Safety Committee. And uh, the goal of that was to have a little bit more communication between their board and city council. So we know kind of what these traffic safety issues are before they drag on too long. And they do a lot. I was looking through previous minutes, getting ready for the um first meeting and. Many, many things are happening. I didn't realize how much they're actually doing as opposed to just the city, although there is. Plenty of city staff there as well to help um understand what these requests um. What we can do with them. Uh, we had citizens come in and comment, uh, and I would love for that to continue. It's council meetings as well. We only know what what we know here, uh, so bring your, bring your comments. Um, yeah, it was great. I'm excited to see what what we can do. There isn't really anything um. For us at this moment, um, so trying to figure out what what is pertinent for the city council to know about and what isn't. Uh, as far as like a stop signs going in at this intersection, I don't know that we need to know that, but stuff is getting done and uh staff has been great working with them, seems so. It's a, yeah, keep you updated and that's all I have.
Awesome, thanks.
Part four last night was pretty. Just a lot of, lot of like discussion. Sand, the sand and water feature at Snyder Park. A perpetual source of of the issues and challenges, so there's a lot of discussion around that. Addressing those issues as they arise, staff's done a great job, trying to educate the public on the terms of dangers. Water into the sandbox, sand comes. And it also causes obviously maintenance issues with with the water feature itself. So it's a good discussion on that. I think um. Some tree, tree stuff, not too many tree removals this month, just a couple. So dead trees, bad trees, they're not, they're not healthy. Um, and then, yeah, that was it. And there's no, yeah, next part's for me will be uh not the first Monday in September because that's Labor Day. So it'll be the following Monday in September. So that was good and I think that's all.
Awesome, thanks.
None of my assignments have met. I think the biggest thing that I'm excited about is the Youth Advisory Council. And thank you for being here tonight. I'm super excited to work with you all going forward. We've got a great group of of young people that are passionate about their community and making a difference. So. I think that's big, my big news. Everything else has been covered so far.
We have a first meeting date?
We do not.
All right, uh, Planning Commission went over this annexation code, public here policy. Or the, so you just heard about that, got up to speed on that.
You did it twice.
Yeah, so the work group, uh, I I went to the Housing Actions Work Group, uh, the DLCD Committee on on Housing. Lot of good stuff in there, um, some stuff that just doesn't apply to Sherwood. So um, I reached out to some of the consultants. That were on that and they sent me some additional um materials and put me in contact with several builders. And um organizations like, I mean, I, we all know about Habitat for Humanity or others that are trying to do. Different innovative housing things. And so I just been getting smart on that. I'll um share any findings. With the um council on that if if you want, or share them with city manager. And then I also was invited to the Taiwanese Association of Greater Portland. They had their summer activity here in Sherwood. And we've got some phenomenal businesses. I didn't know, um, just right up here on the base of Parrot Mountain, the guy. Who was hosting the party has a factory in Twolton that makes batteries for the home. And so they were all, you know, and he was showing me, he's got one attached to his van uh that he was doing demos with. But they're made here in Twolton and they are, they're phenomenal. It looked, I mean, i- i- they're smart. So they can, he he said you can give back uh power to uh PGE when when it's expensive. And you can charge your car when it's uh cheap and stuff like that. And so he said, you know, just putting one of those in drops your bill by a hundred bucks or more a month. But um, uh, anyway, the, it was great. They had great food, great activities, things like that. I went to the West Side Economic Alliance fundraiser. Uh, that's where I met with several of the other um, uh, building groups and development uh groups. Uh, let's see what else. Oh, I attended the West or the Washington County Commissioners Meeting. Um, it got a little bit heated. Um, there were, it was mostly discussing the uh, what's that?
Library?
Nope, that wasn't what it was heated about. It was about, uh, yeah, repealing some of their DEI stuff. And I I understand the tough spot they're being put in and frankly, it is a terrible spot to be put in because. You know, as cities, we're kind of, uh, we don't have millions and millions of dollars to absorb. Uh, getting funds cut off. And so it's, it's sad, I think, when uh some of these projects. You know, like a homeless shelter or something like that are facing getting funds cut off. And so um, so it it got very heated and. Frankly, I don't think there's a great answer to it. So I appreciate the difficult position they're in, but just know that. Your voices are welcome at those meetings as well as the metro meetings. Um, there's probably about, I'm gonna say thirty people that showed up to that meeting, so anyway. That's all for me.
Yeah, the day after our last meeting, I attended an awesome swearing in at the police station. So this wasn't new officers, but this was promotions, very well deserved. Um, Officer Cory Gents was promoted from sergeant to captain. It's gonna be a great captain. And this was a new one that was promoted to Sergeant Caraway. Sergeant Caraway, he was a lateral transfer to us not long ago, a couple year or two, not, I remember his original swearing in. So um, uh, so that's great that we have people that are um able to fill in these positions as we have more retirements coming. Um, we have a lot, a lot of new officers. Um, National Night Out was tonight. It was a, it was a great event. We had a great turnout. Cooked all the hot dogs after I left. They got rid of them all. Um, the band was great and people just loved coming out to that event. It was beautiful weather, not too hot. Kids playing in the water, um, families sitting on the the grass, listening to the band. We had hot dogs, chips. We had Otter Pops for the kids, face painting for the kids and the dunk boot, water was called dunk thing, dunk tank. Um, that some of our officers went in, so and.
But not the chief.
But not the chief. We could have got the mayor.
Oh, no one wants to see them.
They would have probably came out in droves probably to dunk you. Uh, last, last night we had a Region One uh area uh commission on transportation meeting. And it was all about a big discussion on traffic safety and how to. Make safer roads, uh, make it safer for bicyclists and walkers and all the components that are on our roadway sharing it. And um, and what that looks like in traffic safety plans. So that will be all I have for today.
Awesome, thank you. Um, I have a couple of things. I too went to the swearing in. That was great. It's great to see. Um, of us promoting from within and and building upon all that experience that we have with our amazing officers over there. The uh, National Night Out was once again amazing and a fun event. Got to see a lot of people. I don't get to see all the time down there, which is great. Um, I, big shout out to, I think someone already mentioned, the Music on the Green series has been amazing. Um, Sharon, Sharon and I have been tried to be regulars down there and tomorrow night is Johnny Limbo and the Legnuts. For those um in my generation.
Sixties, seventies, eighties.
Yeah, uh, I remember them big, they were big in Portland for years and years and years. This their last year playing together, so. Uh, might be the last chance to see them. So that that's tomorrow night, which is great. Um, at the Robin Hood Festival, which uh was amazing. Um, got to go down and read the proclamation, looking up the the season, but I just, uh, great crowds, great weather. Um, it just felt very family. It was, it was amazing. Really enjoyed that. He's kind of green, uh, then onto kind of some business things. Uh, we have, I'm gonna be going to the Oregon Mayor's Association. A meeting in Baker. They have their uh summer conference in Baker in a couple of weeks. Um, so that should be interesting. It's a chance for all the mayors to collaborate on statewide issues that affect cities. What else am I missing here? Oh, and then yesterday was the Party on the Plaza, which was another great event. Uh, that the uh Main Street Organization put on, so they took over the Robin Hood Plaza. And um, just a really nice family vibe. I really enjoyed it and I think it's a very com- complimentary event. Some of the other events that we have.
Great turnout, too.
An amazing turnout. They had a good music and and great food and lots of vendors down there and. Um, it's interesting, there's a lot of people that run businesses out of their house that I would have never known about if without these kind of vent events down there. So that was kind of fun to see them, so. And then on the less exciting and fun stuff, um, we have uh the Governor's Called uh Session on Transportation here. Coming up, so we're gonna be meeting with our lobbyists to talk about if if we need to be weighing in on some transportation bills. What's, why it's so important, important for Sherwood is um transportation dollars that are collected by the state. So that's like the gas tax, DMV fees, um, registration fees and stuff. There's. A longstanding rule that it's split fifty, thirty, twenty, fifty percent goes to the state, thirty to counties and twenties to cities. So it's real important that we protect that, that rule as they're looking at funds. The uh stopgap bill, the governor tried to push through. At the end of the site, at the end of the last session, was gonna raise the gas tax but give it all to the state. So that was one of the reasons most cities and counties post that bill. So we'll be following that closely and weighing in. Um, as appropriate, as a city on that, just to protect our revenue streams uh coming into the city. Um, and I think I'll. I'll leave it at that. It's summertime, so a lot of the regional stuff's not happening right now, so. Anything else for the good of the order? With that, we are adjourned.